I bet you can't remember how it's been cold in here. I never know if it's going to be cold or hot.
You could be assured right now it's going to be cold.
My mic's turned on.
I'm just making sure everything's working.
Vince, is this going to be on Facebook?
Yeah, that's what we're definitely.
Can everybody get their mics on if they're not already on? Good. Thanks, Charles.
Did you check Facebook?
Take Charles.
Confirmed, AB's good. All right. I'd like to welcome members here in the chambers and anybody tuning in online to a special city council meeting. This is obviously scheduled for today, Friday, August 30th, at noon here in the chambers. The purpose of this special meeting is to make sure we can review and discuss the findings and recommendations from the city treasurer as it relates to the city's internal financial controls, practices, and procedures. Obviously, if you tuned into our last council meeting, you would have seen the special meeting motion and the subsequent carry of that motion to hold this meeting today. I'd like to just rise for a pledge of allegiance, and then we go ahead and get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a few opening comments from me, and then I'd like to turn it over to our attorney for any initial comments as we kick off. Vince, same to you, and then I'll pass it over to Treasurer Fonti and any council members who had motioned for this meeting to take place. First comment is, I'm glad we're having this meeting. And if you look at this administration being in place, all of us sitting here since November of last year, I'm really proud of a lot of the work that's been done to take a critical look at our personnel, our process, and our procedure. I know that a part of the discussion that's important here is it wasn't just over the nine-month course that we've taken a look. We've had a chance to take a look in history and understand different processes and procedures that led us to what we have today, and I think it's an important element. Some of the observations that might be in scope of today were from prior calendar years and prior administrations, but it all, at the end of the day, relates to the work that we're doing today and moving forward and how to optimize and make sure we have the right process and control in place. The second thing I'd like to call out is a special thanks to many of you, but specifically to Chief Tangway. Chief Tangway, I think you've done a phenomenal job as our chief of police and DPS lead as it relates to looking at things like payroll and process and procedure, and not only just looking at it, but auditing it going back in time and context of the discussion I just had, and making sure that we've taken documented corrective action to address opportunities. And counsel, I know, and treasurer, I know many of you have been involved. Amy deserves a very special shout-out as well on what you've done in the financial element of this, but I wanted to just comment on that. There's been some work done to date and some corrective actions that have already been taken as it comes to some of the topics that are in scope of today's discussion. The next item I wanted to call out is, more broadly speaking, just hats off to Amy and thanks to Treasurer Fonti for a lot of these recommendations, real-time as we've worked together since your appointment by counsel, which is, you know, some of the account controls, you know, and making sure we have additional controls in place for account access and other visibility. So I just give you that backdrop because I think there's been some good work done, but we need to continue to focus on what work needs to be done and make sure that everybody's got visibility to current state and where we want to go. So I will stop there and turn it over to our attorney if there's anything that you want to set a tone on for today's discussion, and if not, then we'll pass it over to Vince and Treasurer Fonti for any comments as we dive into the discussion.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Just reviewing Treasurer Fonti's letter he put forth before this meeting, I just wanted us all to keep in mind that it's a preliminary, and I don't even want to call it an investigation, preliminary findings by Treasurer Fonti of what he's discovered thus far in his position. That said, if counsel feels that any of this is a level to where there could be, you know, beyond conduct that might escalate to criminal, my recommendation's going to be to counsel, let's not make any allegations about anything that we don't know for certain, and then also, if there is a feeling amongst counsel that there are some activities that are questionable, that we hand it over to a third party to do a proper independent investigation into that. I'm not going to recommend that the City of Gibraltar internally do any investigation because a fair and proper investigation should be done by a third party, so there's absolutely zero bias in such an investigation, and that's my recommendations based on what little I know at this point.
I appreciate that. I'll get to you, Councilman Valentine. Vince, anything to add to that?
No, I would just defer any comments I had, just participate in the discussion as it evolves.
Awesome. Councilman Valentine, any question on your end?
I don't know exactly what we're about to discuss, but it should be in closed session. And my second opinion I have is maybe we should turn this over to the state police for investigation. That's where it's a neutral party. None of us are involved in it.
Yeah, and I think I'm going to have our attorney advise on any point during this discussion if we should stop the discussion. I think there's other considerations here, which is personnel and employment consideration, so I'll leave it to you to advise on any of that.
Correct. Yeah, I don't believe we're addressing any individual personnel at this point, and however, though, to enter closed session, if we're discussing personnel, it's the actual individual that would have to request the closed session. The council can't demand the closed session. Also, there's no pending litigation that we would be discussing at this point. Obviously, if there's some written opinion that you need from the city attorney, then we could discuss that written opinion as attorney-client privilege, but right now, based on what we have, we haven't got to the point where we are need to enter a closed session. And to your second point, counsel person, I agree, MSP or some other third party like that would be the ideal situation if, if there's a feeling that it reaches that level. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Fonti, we'd love to just turn it over to you. I know you sent the correspondence, but maybe you can talk through some of the key objectives that you had proposed for counsel to consider, and then counsel, I know, had motioned for this to take place, so counsel, any other added comments can be turned over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for attending today and at-home watching. So the reason I called the session today or requested the session was to discuss the elements that are within the letter, four of those things that we'll discuss after the, you want to call it the elephant in the room, the issues about fraud and payroll theft. So I'm going to paint a broad stroke because, like our attorney and others on the council, I don't know a lot, but I know enough to where I feel that it should be forward to a level outside of this city and have somebody independently look at it, in all fairness to everybody involved, for those that maybe under that umbrella were, DPS has found irregularities and corrected them so that the taxpayers are satisfied, and if there's any reimbursement on the horizon for anything that was either mistakenly or willfully done, that those monies be returned to the taxpayers. So let me lead with my opening statement here so that we're a little clear on where the treasurer wants to go. So the collection of property taxes is in full swing this week. Citizens give their city their hard-earned income as an obligation and as a symbol of support to the administrators and officials in this city to manage their money and spend their money wisely. The money is used to provide a community with multiple essential services such as policing and security, fire and emergency and medical services, water and sewer systems, roads, bridges, recreation, and the list goes on. Payment for these services come in forms of employee payrolls and payment to vendors and professional services that are rendered onto the city. When we sit at council and sit at this table, we represent our taxpaying public, and with this seat comes the necessary obligations that are attached to each of our positions. The taxpayers want and demand accountability for their tax dollars. We're taxpaying citizens also, so we should demand the same. And when a city check for payroll or vendor services is prepared for signature, the taxpayer expects that check to have been reviewed with all the necessary processing and internal controls before the responsible check signers put pen to paper for that check to be released. Earlier this week, our office sent out correspondence to this council on five issues related to the obligations that we are responsible for, and that need to be addressed in front of council. Some of these issues will simply need clarification, review, agreement, and support. All of these issues will give our administrative staff the direction, the processes, and support, and any required follow-up they need to move forward when confronted with and identifying questionable finance needs or issues. The relationship with these issues all point to a solid leadership in our city administration controls and that person leading that. It's a, it's a position that requires solid leadership, a disciplined leadership, a leadership that operates with the processes, the leadership that supports the processes and educates and assists the staff at a professional administrative level. This is paramount. I'm talking about the city's future administrator that you'll be picking in a short period of time, so choose wisely, counsel. The city, the administrative staff, the taxpayers need the best leadership, not mediocrity. We know that there may be budget limitations and the perception of cost to value. In your decision to hire, please consider the person and the value he or she will offer as an administrator over our five important departments here in the city. So let's get on to the business at hand, the transparency and data that we promised to give our taxpayers. In my short time here, approximately three months, and as my office was moving forward and identifying the lack of process controls, supporting documentation, the required departmental approvals for vendor payments, credit cards, store accounts, the control issues that are associated with that, and the application of uniform allowances, I was informed of possible overpayments to a department payroll. A thorough review of these issues of the payroll in a city department was identified and conducted by our DPS department, specifically the police chief. Procedures and processes were put in place to correct and resolve the problem. The department payroll is immediately experienced in adjustment downward. However, we all are human. We all have the question of, how did this happen? Why did it happen? How long a period of time this occur? Over what period of time did it occur? And how much taxpayer money was involved in play here? These are all questions we have and we'd like to have answers for. Sometimes, public officials like to move forward with the idea that improving matters at hand. They like to move forward and push forward with improving situations and procedures and, and not look back because it doesn't promote progress. I get it. Then there's other politicians and public officials that like to rattle the wind and go backwards to stain a past administration. This office doesn't want to do either. Some would say that the matter is fixed and to move on, but as the keeper of the public taxpayer funds, this office has an obligation to keep our funds secure and to seek reimbursement on taxpayer monies that were paid out incorrectly. Fraud and payroll time card theft are very serious legal issues, especially when taxpayer dollars are involved, and consequently, this will require the proper handling of such matters to protect any of those involved, as well as to protect the investigation as it moves forward at this juncture. I feel the question that kind of was posed initially here is, has it reached the level? My position is that it has. It needs to go forward and get into independent hands, and I think it's only right for, as this matter is on the table, for both sides, if there is sides, because we're all harmed by this, if it is in fact wrong, to give everybody a just process that we're all entitled to. Therefore, what this office has done was to seek counsel from our attorney because of the potential legalities involved, to seek a path forward from outside the influence of any potential conflict of interest from anyone and anywhere, and to include a request for repayment of any unearned payroll amounts to taxpayers if it's justified. So at this point, to our city attorney, if there's further discussion, I'll turn it over to you.
The statement has made you feel it reaches a certain level that requires further investigation, and like I said prior to this meeting, if that's the feeling, then I would recommend that the chief contact MSP, see if they're willing to undergo the investigation, whatever the allegations are in the letter, and then let them come to an independent conclusion and investigation, and we will go from there. As far as if it reaches the level of a prosecution level, if it's state, that's easy enough. County would handle that. I would further recommend, though, if it stays at a misdemeanor city level, if they find that's what it may be, just the worst possible scenario would be to have any form of bias in this process to all parties involved, and, and I would recommend to counsel, if it gets there, not saying it may, it might not even get there, but if it does, that we bring in a special counsel or a special city attorney just to prosecute the matter, to even remove myself, not that I would have any bias, but last thing we want to do is give an individual a feeling that there's some bias or predetermined, you know, thoughts on what's going to happen or the outcome. So that said, I'll hand it over back to all of you to make a determination of next steps.
Well said.
I'd also like to recommend if we keep it at a, or if the MSP doesn't want to take it or can't take it, or in addition to, if they take it, having a third-party law firm or accounting firm take a look into it for civil action as a, if it doesn't rise to the element of criminal, at least we can look at it from a civil angle.
And to that regard, if it's a civil angle, then I would, I would recommend that there's a, at least an accounting firm, which we already have in place somewhat, but I agree to have a third-party independent to look at it.
Yeah, I don't think having the existing company that's been doing it for 25 years look at it, it's, I think it's always a good practice to change every few years so that they don't get too comfortable, and so I would be looking at a different firm altogether from, from the one that we have now.
Yeah, please. Thinking in terms of maybe a forensic audit, that type of thing? Okay.
Yeah, I think.
It would probably be a different person from Plant.
It would be a different person from Plant Moran entirely because that would be a different grouping from that firm, so it wouldn't even be the same people.
What I would recommend, too, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. If it gets there, there are specific forensic accounting firms that specialize in this. I have a long list of them for counsel that they can pick from in interview and all that, so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, though, either. So that, my, my recommendation is, let's just let the process play out organically the way it should, and then if we get to that point, then we'll, we'll bring up those considerations at that time.
So I guess, what is, what does that mean, organically, let it play out? Because I know, this has been going on for six months now. We've been talking about this, and we've been kind of letting it go organically, and it's, we just have meeting after meeting, but no actual action until Mr. Fonti brought this letter to the council.
I think MSP needs to step in as soon as possible, get control of what they need to have in their possession, and then go from there. Contemporaneously, if you want to start the civil process, we can do that, however, the, I don't want to start the civil process too quickly. I'd rather have MSP do what they need to do. The concern is also there's going to be, depending on who did what, if they're a union employee, if they're not a union employee, there's going to be other things that are going to be triggered by whatever we do, right?
Yep, understood.
So it's not like a typical situation with like a business, say, you find an employee that causes an issue, yeah, you can go start your stuff civilly and you can do criminal at the same time. There's layers involved with the municipal employees, and that would be the concern, right? So they have their rights, if they're union, that we have to exhaust all the union remedies before we start anything, so that, that's just the one caveat I would throw out there.
So do you, do you think from your perspective on, on going down any of the union avenues that we wait for MSP to give us some type of trigger that, yeah, this, this elevates that, or is that something that we handle internally?
I think MSP, depending on their findings, will definitely have an effect on if there's any union ramifications versus just us starting a union process without those findings, because if there is a definitive finding by MSP and then there's a prosecution, well, then the whole landscape changes with whatever union discussions we have.
And then conversely, if they, you know, decline to prosecute for lack of whatever, when it goes to Wayne County, if it, if it looks like, you know, hey, we've got bigger fish to fry, or it goes to, you know, hey, this doesn't rise to the level of criminal, but certainly it's, they're, they're not going to give us an opinion that says, yeah, but this is against their union agreement.
They will not, but we'll know at that point that, you know, they don't think it's a criminal level, but that doesn't mean it's not a violation of the union agreement, and they may have independent findings that we don't have at this point that we can take into consideration at that point when we deal with the union.
Yeah, okay.
So we'd be looking for, oh, sorry.
In your experience, counselor, would MSP or the investigating entity know how much money was utilized in this so that, I think, you know, part of my correspondence was pretty much similar to what Councilman Mulner was discussing, and that is an independent audit so that we could verify the amount, but would circumventing that, would, do you think the investigation would come up with that amount?
It depends where it goes, and Chief can probably talk more about this, but there's certain scenarios depending on who, where it goes and who takes it. If it ends up in the Attorney General's office, which is a possibility because this is, you know, government we're dealing with, they have divisions that deal with this type of situation that would handle that type of investigation. It just, it all depends on where it goes and who takes it, but Chief, you can discuss more about that scenario.
Yeah, I was kind of sitting back, just listening to everybody. So the process would be, and I'll just walk you through the process of how MSP would take over one of our cases, which they have currently helped with one other case in a similar situation. So first and foremost, I have a detailed information of what I've put together. MSP would require us to write a local police report, so we would write a local police report here with all this information in it. That report would stay in our computer system, and it would have all this detailed information, and that report would be transferred to MSP for their review, and they have a panel that usually reviews if they will take these cases or not and move forward. So they would put a three, four-person panel together of leadership in their organization and say, okay, yeah, we believe there's enough here to take this case and investigate and work with the City of Gibraltar, so everybody would realize that that case would, you know, everybody that's involved would be probably interviewed, questioned by MSP, whether here, at MSP, there'd be, you know, an ongoing process there. Probably take about three to six months for that. If MSP felt there was enough for warrants to be, you know, any kind of criminal charges, they would put a pact together and send that to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office Integrity Unit. They have a specific governmental integrity unit that looks at things like this. They would probably take another three to eight months to come back with criminal charges or deny criminal charges. I think what our attorney's referring to is, we let that process go first because that's the first and foremost, and if that process at any point gets denied, no charges and/or charges, then we would have to do what would be an internal review of the process for internal changes and reports and how, what we've done for counsel. You know, I, we've done a lot of changes and, you know, we could present those now, but if we present those now, it may muddy the waters for the criminal case. Yes, we have had meetings, yes, we have made some changes to stop some of these things, but ultimately, I believe the third-party's review of this, them making the decision whether it's criminal or not is cleaner for all of us. They may come back and say, there's no criminal, we don't see anything criminal here, we see a lot of bad practices, and then they would have a warrant denial and/or just, they may not even take it. I've been involved in some where they take it, and like our attorney said, they immediately take the case and they turn it over to an investigator at the AG's office, and that investigator has a whole team of people that handles that case. So there's a couple of different things on their level, but first and foremost, I think if you were going to take some action today, it would be to move forward with the police department creating an initial report internally here, documenting everything, writing a written report, and then taking that report and sending it to MSP and calling MSP. That would probably be, if that's the step you want to go.
This is great. So counsel, a motion would be in your court if you so chose to have Chief file the report and submit all applicable information to MSP?
Would you include Rich's findings with that report?
If, I have not, I mean, I've seen his letter, but I haven't seen all of his findings, so yes, that, or what I would do is include a written statement from Mr. Fonti, something in writing that we attach to the report with his information for them to contact him and why this came up. So he would be basically a witness in this, and his statement would be part of it. My first thought process here is, for the integrity of the investigation, is our, our computer system is open to any and all officers in there, that I would put all the documents outside of that computer system, have them ready to put in there at a later date, and send that to MSP, so no one can view these documents either. That way, they're sealed and locked down, because I, like I said, I haven't seen Mr. Fonti's, Mr. Fonti's findings, and probably better I haven't.
Chief, I have a question for you. I've been involved in other situations where neighboring communities will actually do the report. Do you feel it's necessary in the situation?
That could be done, yeah. I could have someone else write the report. I don't think it's really necessary. This is just a fat-fathering thing. I mean, if this was something criminal of, when I say criminal, something of assaultive behavior, a victim besides the city, yeah, for sure, but I think this one's just a simple, write the document, put everything in there, because they're going to do their own. They're going to take our initial, and no matter what I put in that document, they would do their own investigation and look at their own information. They would probably come in and pull payroll reports and everything we have, they would come pull from finance and everything on their own. They're, you know, I've seen them work on some cases where you can have everything handed to them in a, in a box, and they're going to go dig and re-get, re-get all that information.
Yeah. Great. Just for the sake of record, counsel, I'd like to consider a motion to have Chief file the police report and provide all applicable information to MSP?
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Mulner. Katie, do you have that, or sorry, Amy, do you have that motion?
I'm writing it down. Applicable information.
To MSP.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Valentine.
So we got Mulner and Valentine.
Yep, and then all really good discussion points around the next steps and considerations in that process. Any other discussion on this topic?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Chief, if I heard you correctly, you may have some documentation of abuse. Would you make that known to the Michigan State Police?
Everything I have would be in the initial report. Okay. Yeah, but the initial report would lay out the findings of what, step by step, how we found, what we found. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have talked so much. So everything that I have in my possession would be in the initial report, which the state police would then do their own investigation and look into the stuff and confirm that what I have is correct and probably dig deeper than that. So, you know, I've went back as far as January 2023. That's as far as I've went back. I haven't done anything further back than that.
And the observation at hand was right, right around that timeline, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. All right, very helpful. Any other discussion, counsel? Amy, when you are ready, can you please call roll?
Valentine?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that motion is carried. Chief, please let us know if we can be of any assistance, and Treasurer Fonti, make sure that you get Chief the written recommendation or anything.
Counsel, what I was going to say is, I would plan to do is, at the next council meeting when we gather, I will give in counsel a quick update of, reports been filed, you know, MSP is waiting to hear, whatever, wherever we stand in that process, once they have it, there will be no updates, they will, you know, they will do their thing, but that, but this process between now and them getting it and then reviewing it, I will keep us in, in the loop of what's going on, and I hope that's sufficient for you.
Absolutely, yeah. I, just one question. I, you know, you said you went back to January of '23. When did, when did you start looking into this?
January 31st of 2024.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for all the work you've done, and counsel, thanks for the action proposal. Treasurer Fonti, do you want to hit us on our next objective in context of your correspondence?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, let me read the letter or the portion of. Uh, I'll, let me read the letter or the portion of my letter to you so we could, uh, we'll discuss all the points in it, but after continuous reviews of the account payable invoices, the office, this office, with the assistance of the Finance Director and staff, has discovered several occurrences of a continuous nature of employees or employee wrongful use of the city-issued credit card or the city-sponsored vendor or store accounts. In addition, there seems to be no regard for some personnel who have the ability to purchase with city funds to seek, uh, they, they don't go out and seek council approval according to our purchase order policy to rent or purchase items over $500. Because of these unauthorized purchases, uh, my office finds it necessary to do the following. A, uh, we are requesting, uh, and immediately demanding that all credit cards, store credit cards, store account authorizations in possession of any employee or public official and/or appointee other than the police chief, finance director, or the city clerk be immediately returned to the finance department or the city clerk. We also suggest that any reissuance of credit card be authorized by council and will only be done after council reviews and ups, updates the current credit card policy. We are also requesting that council today review, uh, the purchase policy. I think it's been in place since, uh.
2006?
I'm sorry?
The credit card policy or?
No, the, the purchase policy.
It's almost older.
Eighty-six.
I was going to say, it's almost older than me.
These are so, so old.
Well, you know, I know people are going to say it's so old, but, but purchasing in the respect that the policy is old, but purchasing doesn't change, and bad actors don't change. Uh, maybe the amounts might change, but, you know, there, there was a, uh, a lot of effort put in this by a John Connolly in November of eighty-six. He was the administrator at the time. It seems to have held all these years, whether it was buried or it was just deliberate, deliberately ignored. In all fairness to some of our employees, uh, I see Amy up here, our Finance Director, requesting things that are $550 because it's over that amount, and she, she, she exhibits best practices, and I can't for the life of me find the reason why I have to come in and look at a, a check for a vendor that has thousands of dollars on it with no purchase order, uh, no council approval, uh, that has, uh, has tracks of being approved in the past by, by officers of, of the city, and without any regard to any policy or authorization at all. It's, it's just unfathomable that, uh, anybody would, would, would run a, a company or a city like this. So I'm incensed by it because every time I come in here to co-sign a check, it's been almost a chess game with me because of my disciplines that I've been taught and learned and developed in my processes through my businesses over the years, and I don't think they're any different than most people that have discipline when they're handling other people's money. So, uh, for me, I don't know how the process is, is done, but I want the credit cards back. I want these policies reviewed today, and I want the council to try to come together with some sort of unity, even if this policy i- is still in order, if, if it's good and the process needs to be, uh, updated, have your special meeting or your, your, uh, committee meetings to do that, but in the meantime, make it, make it a, uh, either a resolution or a demand that we follow these procedures and that our staff in the office has your support to do that.
Yes.
Now, these, these employees in the office, I'm, I will tell you a little story. When, the first day I came in and, and gathered and, and it was given these checks, everybody was eager to help me, and then the process became, where's this, where's this backup, so on and so forth, all the things that, that, that a responsible person would do before they put a, a pen to, to the paper and sign a check. I was told that we attach the information, keep our heads down, people sign the check, and the check moves on in the process. Well, that doesn't happen with a person like me or somebody in the future after I leave this position that has these disciplines. These disciplines shouldn't change through the years. This 1986 policy, although 1986, again, still has the same bite that a policy today would have, and it's a good instrument to, to continue on, but as somebody told me in the office, there's no bite in that office because right now, we're, again, we're kind of rudder, rudderless other, other than, uh, Vince being the consultant here, but he can't fix all these things. We have to fix them. This council has to fix them. So whether it's within my rights as keeper of the funds to call these credit cards in and just give them out to the, uh, responsible parties until we can conclude and feel comfortable with credit cards out there, um, people going into store credit accounts that only require a signature, hey, I'm from city of Gibraltar, I need this, this, and this, and oh, yes, sign here, and then, oh, the, 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 uh, city gets the bill and the process begins without the subsequent backup of approvals or so on and so forth. Now, people will say, oh, well, we have emergencies, we have this, we have that. Believe me, there's ways of getting through all this. Smart people know how to, to, uh, contain, uh, contain credit cards and, uh, unchecked spending, there's ways of doing that. We're all smart enough to know how to do that. So at this point, you know, I'm open to any question, or you, you review the, the, the purchasing policy, uh, I don't know what it's going to take, whether a resolution to call these credit cards in on, on my behalf and to, uh, review these policies, you know, up to and including expense policies. The union contract for uniforms, uh, from my observation on the contract, in total, we pay out, uh, about $1,000 to our union employees for 350 of it is allocated for cleaning of their, uh, uniforms and $650 to a store account for the purchase of specifically boots, uniforms, and leather work gloves. Now, for some reason, uh, when, when I got these invoices for boots, uniforms, leather work gloves, and uniform cleaning, they do usually, uh, for the most part, some say that, and others have personal purchase items, and I have no idea how that becomes, uh, a discipline here that we've accepted through the years. But I'm here to tell you that I'm not going to sign another check that has that type of attachment to it for personal use unless council starts today to tell me that personal items for specific use for leather work gloves, boots, and uniforms, uh, we can go outside that purview of the, of the contract, so.
Well, well said on all fronts, and I may suggest we take one, each one of those because I think they're each important. So can we start with the credit card one?
Yeah, sure.
And get down the list, so, so council, just for educational purposes, I know, uh, that the correspondence included some of this. So for the credit card, Amy, can you just start with, uh, making sure council is clearly aware of who has a credit card currently?
Okay, um, so the current credit card, sorry, I turned that off. The current credit cards are issued to me, the city administrator, but since Vince isn't interim, he does not have one, Chief Kangway, um, Chief Kang, Katie, the clerk, and then Recreation Director Tammy Gores.
All right.
And that's our PNC credit card. That's our main credit card. We also have, um, a Home Depot and a family farm and home and a tractor supply account, and it has the three DPW workers on it and me. So those would all be considered credit cards as well.
Super helpful. All right, so council, now you know what cards exist or accounts exist and who has access, access to those?
May I add to that?
Yeah, please.
And I just didn't want, I wanted to make sure this motion gets correctly placed. Every police officer has a gas credit card to use for gas. So, uh, you know, I'm not sure if anybody else has gas credit cards, Amy, but I know our police department does, so I want to just make council aware that our police officers, and we have a tracking system for that, and it, we've, it's working very well.
We have one at the front counter for the senior boss that's kept in a box locked up.
Okay, so, so then, so then the credit card policy, uh, basically the people that have it are the city clerk, the city administrator, which Vince does not have, uh, for his interim manager purposes, the police chief, uh, uh, the, uh, DPW lead.
Phil Kang.
Yep, and, and then the Parks and Recreation Director, those are existing. So let's start there, right? Unless council has any concerns about the gas cards, so let's start with those cards. Those are actual cards that the city has issued out. Treasurer Fonti, remind us of your recommendation that you just highlighted for council.
I would like all the cards in except for the, uh, city clerk, city administrator, and, uh, what am I forgetting here? The police chief.
And the finance director, right?
Yeah, the fi, the finance director, the police chief, and, and the, um.
Okay, so, so.
Can I ask for clarification? Are you talking about all the credit cards? Because at that point, I would make a recommendation to keep the gas cards out.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not considering the gas cards.
Just the PNC.
However, I do have a problem with the gas cards only because that account, the girls tell me that any, there, there's additional charges that are put on this account that the girls can't identify, and it's very difficult to get somebody that will, on the other end of the phone line, that will address these things. So Chief, maybe you could help them with that and?
I, I, that's the first I've heard of it.
Yes.
So I'd like to look at the statement.
I'm sorry for, I, for not telling you that.
If there's something going on those.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, 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 it's not great amounts, it's, it might attend to around forty, forty dollars or something like that in, in additional charge. The, the charges make no sense, and, and they recognize that they don't make any sense, but they don't have that kind of time to sit on a line for, for.
So here's, here's what I might suggest, right? Uh, council, it's up to you for a motion, right? With that being said, to be specific, right, it's the PNC credit cards, right? That, and the recommendation is to only allow those credit, credit cards with our chief of police, our city clerk, our finance director, and our city administrator future, right? So with that being said, I would say the council could, we have a credit card policy that has broader stakeholders, some of which currently have, you could motion to, uh, basically adjust the credit card policy to only include those four parties unless any other exception is granted by council or something like that, and that way you have a, a focused use allowed, and then if there's any other exceptional things that you want to reevaluate in the future, you can adjust that. That might be one way I'd look at cleaning this up. Treasurer Fonti, does that align with what you've corresponded?
Sure, I'm open to any suggestion council does at this point.
Do you have any concerns with that from a credit card use policy modification, city attorney?
No, the only thing I'm looking at right now is the, uh, section for the finance affairs of Finance Director. Uh, there's no issue if council makes that recommendation. I'm just looking for clarification, which I can't find at this moment in time. If the Finance Director or Treasurer even needs that from council, they may be able to independently do this on their own with their authorities and powers, but it does not hurt to have council approve this type of situation.
So council.
The ones who are taking the card away, now what if they need money to, you know, to do their work, which they're supposed to be doing? So what, what procedure are we going to have those do?
Well, there's, there's going to be enough credit cards here for that. Uh, that would be something that council needs to address, but, uh, if, that tends to be a problem, uh, you can have a store account with one person that has the signatory authority for that.
We could also issue reimbursements if they were sent in. Anything off Amazon, we have made it so that the only one who should be ordering off Amazon is Katie. A lot of things can be found on Amazon, so.
So if they need something, they could send you a rec and say, I need this.
They can send.
Yes.
Yeah, and then.
Absolutely.
It would be like a little expense report, like I would see the receipt, it would say what it was for, and I would sign off if that was a applicable expense.
Yeah, I was just thinking of Tammy's job because I know, I, these are, I've put on tons of events, and I know what it's like when you're putting on events, you're getting all this small thing.
Yeah, I, I gotta, I gotta say, I didn't even recognize her, her to have the card.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not, that's not a problem for me, that's not where problems are generating.
Yeah.
So that's up to council to determine that, uh.
I think, I think that, if that's not in scope, that's really important, so I think the Parks and Recreation Director should have a card unless anybody objects to that.
She's probably giving a lot of things for all of that she's doing.
One hundred, one hundred percent agree to that, so.
I, I have no issue with that at all.
Council, my, my recommendation is, um, that you consider a motion to allow PNC credit card use, uh, for only city clerk, city administrator, police chief, and Parks and Recreation Director and Finance Director, which would allow us to retain the cards that currently are out for those parties, uh, and, and you could, we could have an exception, you know, if somebody else needed a card, they'd have to come back in front of council to substantiate that. And that way it cleans up the policy and it cleans up the observations that led to this discussion today.
Amy, can you make council aware too? I believe the credit cards, I don't know if they're aware, the credit cards have a max limit per month they can spend on them too, correct?
Yes, they do. Yeah, the only one that I have increased is Katie because all Amazon purchases go through her, but we all have like a max limit, and it's pretty low. I think it's only like two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah.
And you know what, you know what I kind of like about this too is that the city administrator future, which we'll be talking about, uh, in September, will have a card, right? And they could be a gatekeeper for people that needed purchasing, right? As their job, right? So it kind of fits the model. I like that, essentialized, especially with their oversight around functions, right?
Yeah, in, in, in reply to, uh, Councilwoman Cosmore's concern, on item nine of this 1986 purchase policy, and in support of what Amy was saying, the use of personal credit cards, if any city official or employee uses their own personal ju, charge slash credit card to purchase goods or services within the parameters of this policy, they can then submit their invoice, charge slip, and required documentation to their department head for review, and if justified, a request for reimbursement can be made to the city administrator.
Like it.
So.
Like that a lot.
Yeah, I did read that section. I myself, see, I kind of think, I don't really want them using personal credit cards.
Well.
Yeah, that's real old school, that's why I said, I've seen that.
Agreed, but then it forces the review process for reimbursement.
Exactly.
Which I like.
Yeah, but, but, let me, let me back up one item too. So, so in this policy, item number eight, this is any city official or employee who has been entrusted with a city charge, credit card, and has found to have violated this credit card policy, subjects himself to the loss of privilege to use of a city credit card and discipline and up to and including discharge, and this might also subject him to criminal charges if warranted.
Agreed.
May I speak on something?
Yeah, please.
I'm one of the newer employees hired here who was given a credit card, and I've since issued Officer Bates a credit card who picked it up for his gas card. This was never something given to me as a person who was getting a credit card. They got the little credit card policy, but the purchasing policy was, so I think we need to make sure that, you know, we are lacking a human resource department here where this stuff would be given out, and I think if you're given a credit card, you're handed these documents, you're signing for these documents, there's subtracting of these documents. So we, we, we probably let some things slide through the years or missed out on that.
Well, Chief, uh, yesterday, uh, there was a employee policy that, uh, you transferred over to me. I don't remember ever seeing that, and I don't know if those are issued to employees like they're supposed to be. There's a, a signatory document at the back attesting that you did get the policy. There's all kind of good information in there, up to and including, uh, issues of, uh, of wrongdoing and disciplinary action accordingly. I would think that regardless of, of, uh, lacking a human resource director, that human resource director, uh, becomes in our 4,900-person community, the city administrator. So those are things that, in the future, that our administrator is going to have to be tasked with, and council should be smart enough to know now that that is our human resource director and, and that power is given. A lot of these things that we're talking about today really didn't even need to be at this meeting. If, if we had everything in control and the person in, in the process that would govern these things, these are conversations I could have with that person.
Precisely.
In that, so, but we don't have that right now.
Treasurer Fonti?
Sounds like we're doing, quite frankly, as a council, this is my opinion, we're not training our employees properly.
Well, and it, and it, that's why I love, that's why I love this conversation, because it brings on an onboarding discussion, which is relevant, right? It also brings on, we have policies, we need people to sign and acknowledge them, right? Because then it helps document the read and understood or whatever capacity we need, so I think it's going to allow us to accomplish all that. So anybody that has a card will sign both documents, right? There's other onboarding, which is a nice part about Treasurer Fonti coming in, like we talked about it, like, what did I need to know? What policy should I have read? It's a good example of like, what, what does an onboarding package even look like? And the same thing to your point, so.
Do we even have like a new employee package that they come in with, a package?
We need to, we need to build.
I don't know, do we have that?
We need to build it and it needs to be custom tailored to who's coming.
We do, but it's like, okay, all your initial hiring paperwork where this should have been, these should have been part of it.
Exactly.
Your policy manual should be part of it. If you come over to the police department, you're going to get your rules and regs, your general order, all that.
Precisely.
Uh, there's, I mean, it's just something, I think, you know, you're many people doing multiple jobs, and, you know, and so I think, and again, like Vince, we, we've hit on this, a good str, the, the strong city administrator will have to take that role, keep an organization, strong city administrator will have to take that role, keep an organization, keep a file in their office as human resources.
Well, it might, it might be as simple as, once you get, establish the package, it becomes nothing more than a package.
Exactly.
But we got to have an offboarding package too.
Yeah, exactly.
Because when people leave, we got to get their keys back, get their access back, get their computer accesses taken away, all the things that we forget about when people leave also.
Agreed. If I may, City Attorney had a comment?
Yeah, so, all of councils should keep this in mind, especially in the search for a new full-time city administrator. There already is an ordinance section, section two dash forty-eight, which is the duties and responsibilities of the city administrator. And you all should read that prior to your interview process, because this is literally the requirements of city administrator.
One hundred percent.
For whoever's going to take on that full-time role. One of it is, they shall be the chief purchasing officer of the city, and shall be responsible for the enforcement of the city's purchasing policy, and shall further be responsible to develop and operate a system to coordinate with the purchasing of the several departments of the city, and to establish a system of checks and balances relative operation. Another section is, they shall be the personnel officer. Another section is, they shall oversee expenditure of all money. So, two dash forty-eight is an ordinance that's already established, already in place. So, keep it in mind when you're looking for a full-time administrator, these are the functions that they're going to have to fulfill and be responsible for ultimately.
Spot on.
And let me say
They're in place already.
Yes.
There is an ordinance in place already that establishes who's ultimately responsible. And like I said, you don't need to create new ordinances for this, they exist. Just need to keep it in mind when you guys are going through the process of hiring the city administrator, that besides all the other duties city administrator is responsible for, and Vince can tell you, they're responsible for a heck of a lot, they're also going to be responsible for everything that's enumerated in our ordinance, which is section two dash forty-eight.
One hundred percent.
And taking that ordinance like I have in the past, and then just yesterday, I downloaded again, to your point, because I was going to bring it up. When you go into performance evaluations, take that with you.
Agreed.
And do your measurements against that and other things that council wants. What I've seen in performance evaluations here are not what some of these things are.
Agreed.
In fact, it's minimal. And we need to hold our people to a high standard, especially in a role of a chief executive officer of the city.
One hundred percent agree. So, counsel, I think we've had a really good discussion there. So, I'd like, I would encourage a motion, just to make sure council is giving directive, until the city administrator with those duties is fully in place. And the motion would align to our previous discussion, which is, the city PNC credit card policy should only include city clerk, city administrator, Parks and Recreation Director, Finance Director
And Police Chief.
And Police Chief. So, it's those five parties, and that would allow us to then, at least in the near term, enforce that from a credit card policy perspective, and the long-term work on the broader
I want to make a motion that City of Gibraltar credit cards are only issued to the city clerk, the city administrator, the police chief, the Parks and Recreation Director, and the Finance Director?
Correct.
Now, is that for all City of Gibraltar credit cards, or just the PNC?
PNC card, because the gas cards are separate, and so I'd like to be specific on that, because that's the one that we're discussing today.
So, should I say motion to allow PNC credit card use for only city clerk, city admin, police chief, rec director, and Finance Director?
That would be a good way of capturing it, in my opinion.
What about the tractor supply?
I think we're going to head on
I was going to hand that next with the purchasing policy, but this is for the PNC cards.
Just only were mentioned as cards, so
Yeah, PNC cards. Is there a second, sorry, who was the original motion?
Valentine.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Wood. Counsel, any further discussion?
My only question would be, is there any value or necessity to start new accounts? I know on a personal level, sometimes you get that Netflix and some of the other recurring things, the Kindles and some of those stuff that, yeah, your car gets saved on Amazon or eBay or whatever, and every once in a while, a reset kind of helps discharge some of those and start over without having, do we have a need for that?
Well, yeah, that's a good concern, Councilman, because one of the issues, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, when I first started here, was, was the use of our city PNC card on a personal Amazon account?
Correct.
So, to your end, that card is on file at Amazon, I'm most certain of it, because you have to log in with it, and it's retained at Amazon. So, I think that's a good point.
Yep.
Of course, those cards would also be dead once
Let me, let me ask one counter question, which is, I like the point a lot. Would that disrupt anything for those parties that currently have the cards? Meaning like, I know it's probably solved well, like, would anything be risk?
Okay, right now, the only subscription services that you have that are on the accounts that are currently active, because that one was canceled, they had that Amazon Prime, the only ones that have it would be Adobe subscriptions, Adobe Acrobat.
We have to have, yeah.
Yeah.
That's PDF creator and things.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, which we could update, we could just transfer the card.
One thing also helpful with that, and I deal with this with my reoccurring accounts too, Rob, just like you, is when they reset, when you get a new card every couple of years, then they, those charges don't go through unless you reset them. So, there is already a mini check and balance in there, but I don't know how many subscriptions I have on mine either, I got to look, my personal.
I kind of like that, I'd like to, because it'll poke the emails of, hey, payment wasn't successful, we'll probably learn some other things that might pop up. I like that a lot.
Okay.
Do we, I don't think we need to revise the motion for that. I think it's probably just understood we could set that, Amy?
Yeah, I can reset all, all cards.
If we Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
These Amazon accounts, how many people in the city have the Amazon login and password?
Well, now we've made it so that it's only Katie, and Katie is the only one with the Amazon login and password. Anybody who is using their own personal, I know Rick does some Amazon purchases, but anybody else who's using their own personal Amazon, they should not be using it to purchase anything for the city, because it is not tax exempt. Therefore, we are spending more. I know I have even recently sent messages to Katie for stuff that I've needed off there, because you can, you can do research, and sometimes Amazon's the cheapest.
Agreed.
And Katie, that requires two-factor authentication to log in, so Katie would have to log in, the only one to log, so you'd either have to go to her desk, or ask her to do it, and we do the purchase. So, a lot of times, sometimes we'll search it on Amazon on our personal, send her a message and say, we need this order, that may be a better way.
That's how I usually do it. I'll search it on Amazon, I'll send it to Katie, and then Katie will process the order. She prints out my email, attaches it to the receipt, so we have all of this saying, like, hey, Amy just requested a new monitor from Amazon.
I haven't gone through, I haven't gone through this 1986 policy, but I would say, if we're going to make a new one, one suggestion I would have for the new one would be, if you have made a misuse appropriate funds, you bought something on your
Yeah.
city card, that you will reimburse the city immediately, not on payroll deduction, not on any, you know, if it's brought, you know, because that's been kind of some of the problems where someone's, you know, you make a mistake on a card, well, you know, we know, understand mistakes are going to happen.
Agreed.
But it's got to be reimbursed quickly.
All right. Let's, but we're going to talk about purchasing policy next, good call on that. We have an open motion on credit card use. Anything on the credit card use? All right, Amy, if you have the motion, please call roll whenever you're ready.
Okay, Schumate?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Cox?
Yep.
Wood?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Motion carried, Amy, we're going to lean on you to help execute that. Okay, Treasurer Fonti, Treasurer Fonti, we talked about purchasing policy. You just got a good suggestion from Chief around revisions to include reimbursement for any inappropriate use. So, and then we also have the fact that you would comment on it, like, it should be pretty structured over the years, but it's 1986. Treasurer Fonti, anything you want council to consider on adjusting this policy beyond the read and acknowledged requirement for signing it for any employee that's using it?
No, not at this time. What, what the department needs, so that the flow of vendor checks and go out expeditiously and without backup, is to make sure, whatever we do, we have the correct departmental stamps of approval on them, to succeed and ascend to the next level. Because when it gets to a mayor's level or treasurer's level to sign these things, those issues should be in place, so that the confidence, when we're signing it, would maybe precipitate a simple question
Like it.
And not the complex questions we're getting into where things are held up. So
I like it a lot. Counsel, anything you want to see on this? Vince, you had to comment?
Yeah, the only thing I, you know, if you're, when you do the purchasing, and I've had some discussion with others, councilor members in the past, is, I really would like for the new administrator to have a purchase requisition software. And I had the benefit in Monroe where all purchase requisitions came to me. You know, it was seventy million dollar operation, and I probably would get three or four maybe in the course of a day. It wasn't overwhelming, and, but it did, you know, keep things on track, where occasionally I would, you know, send it back for additional information, but it also kept the departments following it. So, I can tell you many times where, you know, I'd get something from, you know, one of the water, wastewater plants, and there's the three proposals and bids that they needed for what supplies that they are. And there's times where, you know, there's a request for a sole source purchase, and there's an explanation as to why. So, at least it's had, you know, the administrator's review. And it came to me on an email, then I could click on that and hit the system, and it would automatic track through our, our general ledger system that it was an authorized purchase and reviewed by the administrator, so
I love that.
I think it's, I guess, you know, Amy and I talked a little bit about it. I do think it would help immensely with, once, you know, if you update the purchasing policy, you have at least the administrative process and controls responsible for where they need to be. And you set the limits as to who can enter the system. You know, we have a lot more employees, and so, you know, it'd come from different levels of the organization, but that controlled who, your internal controls were following through that in alignment with your policy.
I love that.
So, counsel, also pay attention to sections four and section five of the purchasing procedure, and over to, up to and including seven, six, five. I think we've all too often have heard or seen quotations, or proposals, or contracts being written sometimes that haven't gone through this process. It was a process. We've gotten away from that process, and I know council, certain council members have been certain council members have been trying to get something reestablished, because I keep hearing, shouldn't this go out for a bid, or if we're going to do this RFP, we're not going to sole source it, we need to put it out. A lot of times, when we get into these committee meetings, the same things will come up. But the catch-all would be for the administrator or the Finance Director catching hold of these and making sure that everything goes out properly through a sealed bidding process, or as in small purchase transaction quotations.
I like it. I might suggest the motion to consider would be to update the policy, if you so felt it was fit, to include reimbursement requirements, per Chief's suggestion. And then to have all purchasers on behalf of the city sign this immediately to make sure it's read and understood. And, go ahead, sorry?
Are we talking about the credit card policy or the purchasing policy?
We already talked about the purchasing policy, we're talking about the, sorry, credit card policy's already been discussed. Purchasing policy is in scope right now. For the purchasing policy, we've, Chief had suggested, and adding a language around reimbursement of any identified misappropriate use, which should be less relevant, but still relevant. And then Chief also, or sorry, we all said we should have this signed as read and understood by all purchasers, so that we can enforce it at a council level. Meaning, if there's a violation of this, we've already
Well, plus, it'll help the administrative staff, just to prevent further ascension of a bill going through the process. It gets held up, it gets kicked back, and somebody's going to have to attend to it.
And sorry, Amy, do you have something to add?
I was going to say, can I make some comments?
Please.
For the, I would like the credit card policy to be signed by anybody who gets a credit card as well, just so that they understand it.
Agreed.
And then even in the credit card policy, I would like there to be a specification for how much time they have to return receipts to us, because we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be running down receipts. We shouldn't be running down accountability.
No, exactly, and that also makes, interests everything else.
All right, so let's dissect that. So, let's start with, let's start with, since we're on the purchasing policy, we'll come back to the credit card policy. On the purchasing policy, I think council should consider a motion, if they see fit, to include language around reimbursement as appropriate, and to ensure everybody with purchasing power has signed this as read and understood. So, that'll close the purchasing policy. We can revise this if there's any other suggestions, but I would think a motion would be in order for that, if council so chose.
Now, I know we're redoing our policy, you know, I keep saying policies, but it's our procedures and stuff, because we're coming up soon, we're supposed to be doing that. Wouldn't that be done in there, or, or we didn't just include it?
I would say, for immediate purposes, this seems like a good direction to take, because it's an immediate revision, and it's immediate acknowledgement, if council saw fit. I just would need a motion from council to make sure we enforce that. Any motion from council for reimbursement inclusion and signed by all parties as readily understood?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mulnar, is there a second? Second by Cox, I heard.
I was going to say, is that, was that McNabb or Cox?
Any other discussion on purchasing policy? Amy, can you call roll?
Hang on, I have to create roll, I'm sorry.
Whatever you guys want.
So, let me just read back the motion. Motion to include reimbursement and have all purchasing parties signed as readily understood, motion by Mulnar, seconded by Cox.
That's right.
Valentine?
You're voting on the motion?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
And McNabb?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Now, next one is going to be, let's go back to the credit card policy, because Amy, sorry, Amy, can you make counsel where you said time-bound provision of receipts?
I want time, I would like time-bound provision of receipts, as well as anybody who has issued a credit card of any sort, including gas cards, to sign off on this, to show that they understand the policy.
So, since you and Treasurer Fonti are close to the cycle, probably closest, right? What would be a good reasonable time-bound window?
I would say three to four days.
Three, let's shoot for the
Given for a weekend, like, if there's a weekend that's purchased, I would say max three to four days.
Okay, so let's do, let's do max three days, it seems reasonable to me. Max three days of provision of receipts, according to submitted, right? And then read and understood by all parties with the card. That would be the motion we're looking for.
I'll make that motion.
We'll get to a discussion here. Sorry, unless there's something material that, okay?
I'm good.
Motion by Cosmore, let's make sure Amy's got it written down.
Okay, so, sorry. Motion to receive receipts for credit card within three days and signed, and signed and understood by all parties of the policy?
Correct. And we have a motion by Cosmore, is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Valentine. Now, any other discussion on that one?
Yeah, my thought was, most, most times, you can just take a picture and email it in right away, so certainly an encouragement of right away, but I guess, I mean, three days, if it's, if it's past ten minutes, and three days is not much different, with today's technology. I mean, you're not, you're usually handing in paper receipts, and if you are, you can take a picture of it and get it in initially, and then turn in your papers, you know, a couple I mean, you're not, you're usually handing in paper receipts and if you are, you can take a picture of it and get it in initially and then turn in your papers, you know, a couple days later.
True. True that. Um, any other discussion? Vince?
No, I think the reality of it is I've gone through my, uh, just about everybody has a phone and has the capability of forwarding it immediately. So that it's there and.
Yep, great.
While it's in the back of your mind and it becomes habit.
And I think the good news is that being generous in this scenario with three days to the point we just discussed. Is that if there is a lost receipt or some sort of discrepancy, you have time to quickly resolve it without some open-ended window. Okay.
Mayor, one, one comment for me.
Please.
If you go back to the purchasing procedure and, and I know there's been some discussion about raising the five hundred dollar limit. In the future. I know it's not for this, uh, motion, but, uh, I'll give you an example why I'm just sitting here thinking that might not be such a good idea. Because the, the experience that we recently had with ten months of billing from, uh, Michigan Cat.
Yeah.
That was in excess of ten thousand dollars. Uh, that started with nine hundred dollars.
Yep.
And that was below the threshold if somebody wanted to raise this limit to a thousand.
Good call.
I think, I think it's a discipline. It's not so much the figure. It's a discipline of getting, uh, a, a requisition and, and maybe you want to change where that requisition comes from. It doesn't necessarily have to be from council.
Yeah.
But from an approved department head.
Well, and I think that's the beauty is we're all tracking towards a hope that a city administrator is the chief operating officer there, right? Um, good call. Uh, any other discussion? Amy, call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Motion carried. This is awesome. Okay, so we've covered, we've covered credit card policy, purchasing policy and the first topic on payroll. Treasurer Fonte, back to you for, uh, next objective.
The, the next item was, uh, you know, I call them house accounts. Amy, what do you call them? Uh, where you walk into a tractor supply and you sign?
I would call them house accounts, store accounts, um.
So they don't necessarily have a, uh, the employee doesn't necessarily have a credit card, right?
Well, with Home Depot and Tractor Supply, they do. With, um, like Family Farm and Home, they don't. We do have an account with Red Wing Shoes, but they call me before any purchases can be made.
Yeah, there's, there's, I've never seen this much activity out of those types of accounts in my life. It's, it's kind of daunting to keep track of and, and, and for me, or any other treasurer, or any other co-signer on a check. When you, when you get a Red Wing account, you start running around asking questions. Why do we have a Red Wing account to buy shoes? It, that kind of amazes, ma- makes me stutter here because I've never experienced that in my business career. Not saying it's right or, or wrong, but it, in this case, it tends to be wrong. Because some of the experiences that, uh, that I've come across is, is all related to this uniform allowance. In the, uh, Teamster Agreement, Article, uh, twenty-eight. And for me, it reads very clearly, but in the past, there's been some luxuries given and some of these are termed, uh, past practices. I, I want, what I'm seeking today is to get a definition of what we think, uh, the uniform allowance should be paid and how it should be paid. And to, uh, question these house accounts, if we need those types of house accounts with the luxury of, of, uh, employees doing, uh, that type of transaction for Article twenty-eight. The problem becomes with Article twenty-eight is that, li- like we've alluded to earlier. The receipts and the invoices I, I have come across and have all been pointed out by our staff. Has to do with a lot of personal items and that translates somehow into a uniform allowance. So that's the issue that I want to deal with today to, to, uh, bolt down this allowance. And, uh, bolt down the store accounts and see how necessary they are. Because also with that becomes, uh, a luxury of any employee buying tools. Uh, I've seen some tool purchases on, on these accounts, uh, to where I can't believe that in an established system that we don't have these tools on hand. Uh, it, it becomes sometimes a, uh, a, uh, luxury of, like walking into a candy, uh, candy store. And I think, uh, we don't need to give our employees that type of luxury or that type of bait or that type of temptation.
I, uh, two thoughts there and I want to turn it over to council. Well, can we take the house accounts that we just talked about? And separate that from the uniform allowance just so we can hit one topic at a time? So can we start with the house account? So council, you just got educated, right? There's, there's a couple of house accounts that are being utilized for purchases. Treasurer Fonte and I and probably other council members have seen some of the things that are showing up there. And it's hard to rectify the necessity of them or lack thereof, uh, the inventory considerations, uh, uh, the why behind the purchase, right? So I guess, uh, I'm not really experienced in this area, but one method would be having our city administrator, whoever's overseeing that, have to approve that. Like I heard Amy talk about that for Red Wings, separate discussion, but like, hey, I get a call for something's purchased that I can approve or not. That might be one measure that could be taken. Um, I guess, I'm just trying to understand the, what's best for the operation, right? There's, supplies are going to be needed. I don't want it to restrict that on a real-time basis, but I want to make sure the right oversight is there.
Well, the, the other thing is we're dealing with a thousand dollars that create, creates this mess. Sometimes I think I've had discussions that you're almost better off giving the employee a thousand dollars and, and, and moving on. So that thi- this temptation doesn't occur, so.
I want to separate the uniform allowance from the house accounts, right? Because the house accounts are, yeah, the uniform allowance.
But the, but the house accounts are affected by the purchasing of the uniform type allowance.
Um, yeah, okay, I hear you, but I think that the house accounts from my understanding are for like operational daily needs for the.
Well, it gets contaminated with this.
Contaminated, just so there's cross contamination. But I think we're talking about the same thing, right? I think what I would recommend council to consider is like as an immediate measure, right? Is a required approval prior to purchase versus somebody being able to walk in there and buy what they want, right? Meaning even if it's a real-time phone call or a request submitted, helps us measure, right? Like what's being purchased and why. That would be one immediate step that we've taken. But I'm open to whatever council thinks is appropriate and some of you have more experience in this than I do from a real-world perspective.
Amy, let me, let me ask you, on those, give me, give me the house accounts again.
Um, let's see, we have the, well, I guess we have the gas card. We have the Home Depot card. We have Family Farm and Home, um, Rowing Shoes. Did I say Tractor Supply?
Yeah. So actually, and while you're doing that, while you're writing down Vince, how have you managed this in other cities? Meaning those types of purchases, right? How do you oversee that so that you know it's confidently purchased?
Well, we have, you know, my experience is, uh, we have had some open purchase accounts with limitations on it. And identifying people that have access to do that. So, and then you're going to see it more, more likely with, in, in a utility, uh, operation. Where they may need to get some, you know, part or something like that, uh, to, 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 that they don't have on inventory. But, uh, but, you know, part of it is too, is just, you know, I think where I, I have had some open accounts, but it's been very limited. And, uh, so I, you know, I, I can see that, you know, in some cases you may need something right now and somebody's not available to approve. That's, that's the real dilemma. Uh, how do you provide enough of that? So there may be some limitation, you know, I know Amy had talked, uh, had mentioned, well, here's one, uh, card you can keep actually an open for, for personnel with a limited dollar amount, uh, uh, but having three, four, five of them, well, I'm not sure at that point.
Alright, so now you have the municipal perspective. I mean, not jumping on his spot, but Rob, Rick, others, you have like real-world experience here and oversee this. Like how is this working?
Yeah, Pat, you want to go first?
You know, you were talking about uniform allowance. That's pretty much only applies to the police department, right?
No.
No.
No, it's, it's good, but I don't want to, so we're, right now we're on the house accounts. We're going to get to that next, deep dive on the uniform allowance.
Okay, I'll wait.
Uh, just for the sake of keeping it consistent with what we're talking about.
So, so we, you know, we, we have, uh, Lowe's and Home Depot accounts at our, and Tractor Supply accounts. And, uh, they're, they, each of those places have different types of accounts. So it's not just a generic one type of credit account. Uh, they've, they've got a variety of different accounts. And you can set them up a variety of different ways. Uh, I think I've seen one of the Home Depot bills here where I, does it classify who utilized the account? Or do they all get lumped in together?
I think they do identify who the.
I think they do identify.
They do identify the purchaser? So they have to present a card. They can't, uh, they can't just go in there and just, just say they are who they say they are? Okay, well, I mean, that, that's one thing is making sure that each person, uh, has, there is ways to have them call or require a PO. And, and I don't know if we require a PO or an.
How do you screen it for your confidence in the purchase? Like it's like a partly of like a part of the teams to be daily needs, right? But like, how do you screen it for validity?
First of all, my experience has been, because I've gone through the same thing as a few people here on the table. You gotta have a policy in place. The people need to know the, the after effects of, of doing something that's out of bounds. And, and, you know, once, once they know that and then they cross that line, then they're subject to a discipline. And that discipline is up to including discharge. So, you know, an individual goes into Home Depot with their individual account and they purchase something. This is not going to be a per- perfect system.
Yeah.
But when challenged, and you know, that's part of our, uh, performance duties here. We look at bills and, and, uh, we, we challenge why the purchase.
Yeah.
We should get an answer and it should be a reasonable answer. If it's not, then it has to ascend to the right party to, to, to start the cause of disciplinary action. It, it's that simple.
Agreed, agreed. So then I guess here's the, then this might be a good direction to take. We're not going to solve all those details today, right? But maybe what the direction is, we need a house account policy? Like how do we want to handle, what, what's the, what's the next step here? Or does that already counted in our policy?
I would think that with the house accounts, we would lump them under our credit card policy as well and have people sign off. On the credit card policy as that being their objective to follow.
So it should be consistent because it's got similar themes that address what you just said. So maybe the motion could be today for the sake of immediate steps, uh, motion to ensure house accounts abide by credit card policy. And that we have, I, I'm just, I don't know about the approver thing. I don't know what the most practical thing is to do that, right? Because to your point, like Vince, there might be somebody that needs something today. If you're not able to take the call and approve it, I don't want to inhibit operation.
But you'd limit the, uh, the dollar amount that they're authorized to purchase. If it's a significant amount, then, then there's a higher, you know, and I'd say, I'm just saying a hundred dollars at any point in time. I mean, I can't imagine it being much higher.
The thing is, the thing is, it's, it's not hard to catch up with bad actors.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we've got enough eyes on the target.
Right.
Yeah.
So it, it, it gets to the discipline part and, and having the employee have knowledge that they're out of bounds.
So then, here we go. So there we go. So maybe that's it. So we, we ensure the house cards are according to the credit card policy. That's one step we take immediately, which requires signing and there's implications of misuse, right? Secondarily, right, we, we feel like we have good process controls. Maybe, like, I know we've been asking, like you and I sat down on those, right? It was like, what's the why? Like what is this purchase for, right? It helps contextualize if it's real or not. Um, and maybe that's a good method coupled with the policy accountability. Is there any steps, other steps we could take today to better evolve that?
I was curious with Rick's case, uh, you find yourself in those circumstances, uh, given the nature of your work. Mostly it's going to be in a, at a public works, uh, utility type of operation.
Most of our, we have accounts with most of our suppliers that we're going to utilize special materials on. We require that you purchase it with your own credit card and you're reimbursed.
Yep.
So that's our policy. So when you have to do small purchases, you're reimbursed for them.
Do you, do you get much pushback?
No, generally it's the, the supervisors of the projects that are, um, you know, tasked with it. So there's already a, um, familiarity with them. It's not like we send the laborers to go purchase things, if you will.
But, but in our situation with, let's just, we'll, we'll single out the DPW. Because those are usually the, 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 the people that have emergency needs.
Yeah.
So in this case, all, all three of our employees been blessed with the, uh, responsibility and the, uh, the ability to go out and purchase. Am I correct, Amy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, but at the same time, uh, everybody needs to be educated on what their limitations are and what the disciplines are and so on and so forth. So I'm not opposed to, uh, trying the process out.
See what.
And, and if it works, it works. Uh, I don't want to limit and, 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 and be the cause of not being able to get something on an emergency basis. But if, if we have everybody educated now, including council and, and things come up and it rises to, uh, a union disagreement or whatever. We'll have all our instruments in place and we'd be able to attend to it.
I like it. So let's, let's, um, let's take that. I like that as a next step and then we'll have the controls in place. So council, we'll be looking for a motion to ensure, uh, house accounts abide by credit card policy. And applicable personnel have signed as read and understood. And Amy, when you are ready, I want to make sure you could, I, you don't have a motion on the floor. So council, you'd have to make the motion if you so chose.
I'll make a motion based on the description that was offered, which I was letting her write down before I made the motion.
Can, can I say one thing, uh, to, to Councilman Valentine's? He was going into the uniform thing. Is that outside of this?
We're going to get to that next. I just don't want, I don't want to overly.
I didn't know if it had to be part of this or not.
We're going to get to that next.
So motion to ensure house accounts abide by credit card policy and applicable personnel have signed as read and understood. Motion by Cox, seconded by?
Second.
Second by McNabb. Any other discussion on that? Okay.
Alright.
Amy, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Uh, that was topic number four. This is awesome. I think the last topic, if I'm not mistaken, was uniform allowance.
Well, last topic on, on this part and then we have one more.
Yep, exactly. So uniform allowance, did you want to address that? I know we've already shared that. And just council, you're in front of you, you have section twenty-eight, so if you haven't already seen that.
I didn't get that part.
Hang on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll take that. Alright, so, uh, as previously described, there was, there's a uniform allowance for our, uh, police force. But there's separately a uniform allowance that has historically been in the DPW contract. What is being asked of you to consider today is the uniform allowance from the DPW contract that is in front of you. Treasurer Fonte, you want to add any more color to that?
No, I'll just, I'll, I'll start from the beginning. Uh, Article twenty-eight of the contract has, uh, four parts to it. And if you'll notice, twenty-eight point three is the city personnel policy manual that's included on there. So, you know, from my perspective, I don't know if, uh, those employees are in receipt of that policy and if they're not, they should have it. So, but above that, twenty-eight point one and twenty-eight point two. If somebody sees a, a disagreement with the interpretation of that to where it would include personal items.
Yeah, it looks pretty spelled out pretty good.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty clear, but somehow it got convoluted, I guess, over the years. But I don't really care about the past. I'm dealing with, uh, my present time responsibilities. And I come across things that are not even near some of this and, uh, I need that corrected. Or at, at least we need to establish that we're going to.
So this says account to a store. Can it be to, um?
Well, the stores would be the house accounts that we have, which is Family Farm and Home, Tractor Supply.
Okay, because I was just wondering if we could do, I know my husbands, they do like, he gets a, he gets a certificate for to get a new pair of boots. And then at work, and then at work gives them a list and they can spend up to so much money to get their cold gear, to get their, you know, whatever he needs to work on. And then once, then once he orders it, he, you know, like he said, he would have up to six fifty, whatever from the work and then the work would order it and that's.
What would be the, what would be the difference though if, 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 uh, an employee went out on their own and did that on their own? Turn the expense report in or the receipt in for uniforms or whatever. Would you know difference? You'd still pay them.
Yeah, and I, I think that would be a good way.
So it doesn't necessarily have to come through a house account. We're make, we're making that convenient for, for that to happen, but not, not necessarily.
Treasurer Fonte, is this section out of the bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Well, then we have to follow what this says unless we want to renegotiate it. So, so word for word is what we have to follow what it says.
Okay, so, but I think we're looking at the clarity and the specificity, the speci- uh, I'm going to use the wrong word, right? But based on boots, uniforms and leather work gloves is what's described.
That's what it says.
That doesn't offer ambiguity to other things.
Exactly. And that's the crux of what we're talking about.
That's what the attorney's saying. Uh, that's, that's why I don't know why we've allowed the, uh.
Well, let's be clear here, right?
The detour, so.
We, we received a, a, a submission that was contrary to this, right? We're not allowing that.
No, I know that.
Okay, yeah, so.
But, but we, we, you know, for everybody to be intelligent enough, that's the fight we're fighting right now to, to make sure we all have clarity. And we all agree that, that as, uh, as our attorney said, we have to.
Yeah.
Read it as set forth. And, and while you are out, if you looked at twenty-eight point three, and you'll notice the city's personnel manual down there.
Yeah.
To be included. And, and again, I don't know if that has ever been given, uh, to that because.
I, I like this. So basically the, if I'm not trying to oversimplify here, but the, as you've said, the bargaining agreement is the bargaining agreement. It must be strictly followed. Anything that does not follow that would be in violation of the agreement, right? So we can handle that administratively, uh, based on information we're receiving. But it's good for council to be aware of that. Is there any action discussion that needs to be taken on this, please?
And I'll just let you know that, um, one of the issues that, that'll come up, and I brought it up before, is, you know, past practice. And just council has to be aware of it, uh, you know, where I've had circumstances of this being the case, you could do it one of two ways. One is do something that they, it's been part of the past practice and deny it and then ultimately deal with the grievance. Or, um, basically ba- we're going to adhere to it. Uh, there's nothing formally. And again, there'll be, there'll be pushback on it because of the concept of past practice. But going forward, we're not going to be doing this anymore. So we're on notice that, uh, and that'll lead to a dialogue.
That's a good point. So does anybody?
I think once we educate, educate them, let them know what's going on, you know, Pat, you know, we got great employees, you know? And I think, I think some of it, they've not been, they've not had the training that they should have. So I think maybe just, maybe this might be thinking we're going to have a meeting with them saying, okay, this is the way it was supposed to be. We're doing a. We're doing it wrong before. We want to make sure we're doing it right and explain the situation, you know? And I think that would probably take down a lot of the trouble.
I think you're spot on. And we already just want to, you be clear, we've had that sit down discussion to say we do not think this aligns to the agreement, the scope of this. But go ahead, please.
But if I'm, if I'm correct, you've, we've had this discussion and it's bounced back again since that time.
Okay, important, important distinction.
Am I, am I correct?
I'm not aware.
I I don't know when the discussion was held versus when some of the new receipts were given. So I just want to be cautious about.
That's a good point. I'm not aware of a bounce back, but we will, we could talk. Either way, we all agree. Is there anybody that disagrees that past practice should stop and that this should be the agreement and we should abide by that? Is anybody that disagrees with that? Okay, I think we're aligned.
I think, and and maybe we consider this as part of either the next contractor, if we can get a revision agreed upon in the meantime. But just a reimbursement for these things because at least in that case, it's not too late. Because if they're putting these things onto a house account, then then it's, well, don't do that next time.
No.
You know, versus not approving a reimbursement request.
I like it.
I think the sheet simply today should go in an email from either the administrator or Mr. Fonti that says we are going to follow the contract like the attorney said. The contract is clear and specific. Because, believe me, if there's something in the contract that we're not following, they're going to file a grievance. So just very simply, a follow up with today's date that we're going to follow the contract as written. And that should close the loop right there.
I like it.
If I may, just to add to that, you know, that I've referenced, you know, with some correspondence this week, that I'm used to doing in service programs. And we change policies, you meet with the employees, here's what's going on. And again, here's the sign off that you've been notified that you're present as well. And I would suspect that, you know, there is a change in practice and people need to understand the reason, the rationale for it. And, you know, from my end of it, who's the, who are the parties? I mean, I sincerely, you know, with Treasure Fonte, certainly with Amy, you know, possibly the department heads, mayor, yourself, you know, being a part of it to set the tone, this is where we're going with it. This is why we've got, you know, much of what you, Treasure Fonte, introduced his introductory statements was, you know, why we're, this is important to maintain the public trust. And and so here's what's going on. Here's how it's going to be happening going forward. So everybody knows and understands. So I think in this case here, this is an administrative item for the contract. I think it'd be better handled at that level as opposed to, you know, you've agreed to this contract, okay? Let us administer it. But part of it is, there's going to be a conversation.
Can you help us with that?
I will.
Since you have good experience there. Okay, next step is aligned and understood. Any other comments on this one before we move on to the last objective for the day?
Yeah, I don't think any of this needs a motion or anything.
No, I think it's.
I think they'll take care of it, yeah.
Amy, do we have a Galls account?
A what?
Galls, G A L L S. I mean, I'm sure that's where the police department buys most of their uniform stuff.
Um.
I'm sorry.
Do we have a Galls account?
Yeah, our police department uses Galls online. They have their own Galls website, which is a duty gear website, which is everything in there would be police related. The only thing outside of police related that you could probably buy there would be maybe a non-commercial hat, pair of tennis shoes. But, you know, if they said they were using their tennis shoes for conditioning, you know, they would be fine with it. They submit their receipts, get submitted to Michael Anderson for uniform allowance, so they can go through there or priority one. We have allowed some Amazon purchases for some stuff that would be specificized that they can't get or something. But that's where they.
Do you review every, all these purchases?
They come into me and Mike Anderson, I review them and I sign off and I submit them over to Chelsea for payment to Galls.
Nice work. Anything else you want to add, Amy? All right, Treasure Fonti, why don't you take us home with your last objective?
Okay, the last thing on the last page of my correspondence is, I don't know. It, to me, it's an unfortunate circumstance. I'd rather not even talk about it. But we had an association that contributed $2,500 for the cause of purchasing, towards the purchase of a city rescue boat. They've asked me to look into it, which I did, where their $2,500, what the status is. This was done in July of 2023. I looked in past agendas and meeting minutes and found no discussion on a rescue boat in the city. My estimates of a rescue boat is anywhere from probably 150 to $250,000, depending on how you want to dress it out. And even more than that, it comes with disciplines and requirements and responsibilities of employees to maintain it and be trained in it. So something like that for an ask, for somebody to go around and ask for donations for that would some, would be something that I would think that would be governed by a sanction of of the council, that the the wills are in motion, maybe grants were obtained and maybe we would fall short of some money and we needed some additional reimbursement to push it over to Hill. But something of this magnitude requires, I think, a conversation with council before going out and requesting that. Pictures were taken. I found pictures of 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 the $2,500 check. Amy has confirmed it's in our account. But it's been languishing there for 20, for for a year now, over a year. These people are good hearted people. They're not even asking for their money back. They're asking us to, or at least they've asked me to look into grants and everything else to to push this forward because it's a good thing. We're a boating community and we have duck hunters that are and hunters that are out in the waters during bad weather. So it's something for council to think about. But for for me, I'm looking to 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 find some sort of resolution or action on how we contain employees going out and and requesting donations for something that is not sanctioned by council. And I'm, you know, that's kind of a fine line. But something like this that has a a large dollar sign for a purchase and a large commitment from a city to to maintain it is, to me, way out of bounds. So I'm going to, I'm going to bring up another subject matter. And 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 following this, following this process, I was asking Amy a few different things. And one of them was, where did this money go? And she's, it's in the house account. But we also, as a city, I don't even want to use the word donate or contribute, but somehow the city forwards to the Gibraltar Firefighters Association $12,000 a year in $6,000 increments. And I'm still kind of confused what the purpose of that is. I'd like that defined and what it's for. And I also discovered that there's no reconciliation of that money in forms of invoice spent for certain things, if it's safety equipment or whatever. If it's not a requirement of the city, I don't know why it isn't. I'll give you a, just a great example. I got from the police chief yesterday all the purchases and invoices and everything else that someone gave a donation to the exercise equipment over at the police department. I mean, why, why? I mean, it was a donation, so there was no reason for him to do that. But it's best pack practices. It's respectful to the donor and, you know, kudos to you, chief.
Yep.
I, as a taxpayer, I'd like to know how $12,000 leaves the fund here and gets over to an association that doesn't require any reconciliation. I'm not saying anything wrong is happening. I'm just, as a keeper of the funds, trying to figure out the succession of money to someone without a reconciliation procedure. Now.
I can answer that, I think. Back, way back when Pat Manning was the police chief, we didn't get paid to go to training. We didn't get, I went to paramedic school, I didn't get paid for that. The trainings we had on Thursday, we didn't get paid for that. So in lieu of that, the city would reimburse the fire department that money, $6,000, every quarter, I think, or every, whatever it is. That's where that came from. But now, if we're paying them to train now, which I think they may be getting now, we should not do that anymore.
Well, as a, as a taxpayer that sat in those chairs and listened to it here or at home, I would always hear that, you know, I'm, somebody's going here, it's going to cost $2,500. And I had no idea that 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 contribution, $6,000, two times a year was was going towards the association. Again, I have no problem with it. The problem I have is the reconciliation of of the monies.
I, I'm with you. I'd love to have a detailed description of what is happening with those funds. And if it is appropriate and being applied and traceable, then great. If it isn't, we need to shut that down immediately, is my perspective, simply put.
I have an issue with it.